Jordan, how are you?
Jordan.
Right.
This is.
One thing I cut off. One thing I cut off. It doesn't matter. It was the. I'm going to bet. The same thing. Right. So good.
Consider printing that thing out. I was like, that's 177 pages. I wanted to get through that.
Yeah, really. I'm just normal. I like it for better than the deal, you know?
Oh, I do too. You got that right. I think they took some notes before I came. I was like, let me take some notes just in case. Oh, man. The one over there from Boot Bar who already came, it looks like they're wanting to make some additions and some changes. And then the one over there, like you were saying about the logos, looks like the opposite of that. Didn't want to change it.
Sometimes. Like Sherman also does.
It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. The woman over there from Boot Bar who already came, it looks like they're wanting to make some additions and some changes. And then the one over there, like you were saying about the logos, looks like the opposite of that. Didn't want to change it.
Sure. Bring this up.
Sometimes.
Because it's like Sherman also does.
It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. Is everyone okay with that? I was like, that's 177 pages. I wanted to get through that.
Yeah, really. I'm just normal. I like it for better than the deal, you know?
Oh, I do too. You got that right. I think they took some notes before I came. I was like, let me take some notes just in case. Oh, man. The woman over there from Boot Bar who already came, it looks like they're wanting to make some additions and some changes. And then the one over there, like you were saying about the logos, looks like the opposite of that. Didn't want to change it.
Sometimes. Sometimes. Because it's like Sherman also does.
It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I. It's 177. Because I actually printed the damn thing off. Because normally, normally I look at it on my paper since I.
This highlights a little bit better what the applicant is proposing to do with that added property. Also on this slide, you'll see in yellow text, that is the only amendment per se to the original conditional business rezoning. We're adding, or the applicant would be adding as part of their request, the language that is also on the site plan now that says access from parcel 104086 to Shadowbrook Drive shall be limited to the right out only. And then also that the conditional business rezoning that is in place right now would be amended to include that additional parcel. You'll also see that there is a landscape plan that shows additional landscaping that would be provided. And the street behind here is Nice Drive. So this would be on the corner of Nice and Shadowbrook. I think that summarizes the application.
Perfect. Thank you. Big hit Nathan Duggins here on behalf of the applicant. My address is 400 Bellamy Street in Greensboro. With me tonight is Richard Benorey, Corey Corporation. Richard, if you can just raise your hand, if you're able to represent him. And Jamie summarized the applicant, our position pretty well. If I could just give you a little more background about why we're standing in front of you. And I appreciate Mike's intervention. This is really in reaction to a DOT project. Many of y'all have probably shopped at this Harris Theater that sits on Church Street. Thank you. I'm not sure if you're doing that. What has happened is the entrance to the shopping center is basically moving away from Church Street. It's just gonna move a little bit to the, or 150 feet towards Nice. Thank you, Matthew. Oh, there we go. Okay. So this is, this is the Harris Theater here, parking lot. And I'll show you the DOT project here in a second. But this is the triangle that's the subject of the zoning. And what you see here is the new site plan that we worked very diligently with Jamie's staff to get, to get in a place to be presented to y'all this evening. You've heard Jamie mention the right in, right out. That's this movement here. But essentially what's happening is where my cursor is right now is where the entrance is today. The entrance is moving backwards because of stacking challenges. Mr. Mills would be familiar with these terms. Stacking challenges on this left end here that's happening as people come in off of 70 and then want to take a left into the Harris Theater. Jamie mentioned, we've had some discussions about eliminating, this is a house. There's a house here right now. And the house is gonna come down. And there's a driveway that's here on Nice. The driveway will go away. There'll be screening here, appropriate streetscaping. And then there's a multimodal path that DOT is installing along Shadowbrook. So I wanted to lift up a couple of other things for the commission to consider. Once this driveway, the entrance into the shopping center moves in this direction, one of the challenges we have is truck traffic. Because this is a, is a, is a tight site already. And our client Corey has worked really hard to try to figure out a way to get that truck traffic from behind. This is tight back here, as you can imagine, kind of an older shopping center in a lot of ways. But that traffic needs to come out here and take that right out. And we've worked with Chuck Edwards and Wright Archer, who are NC DOT folks, in kind of designing this right out to discourage a left in or a right in. Right? You really want to limit this right, right out traffic. We did have a neighborhood meeting. And because we're basically adding this triangle to this larger parcel, all the neighbors on the west were notified, along with the neighbors to the north, of course, and the neighbors that are home Nice. We had six folks attend, including the gentleman that owns the house that sits here on Nice. And we feel like we've addressed their concerns about the screening along here on Nice and any other traffic issues. Hopefully, when this is all done and this project will start, this is up to DOT, but this project will start probably at the end of this year, beginning of next year. The project being the NC DOT project, where they're gonna make the changes to Shadowbrook. And that project will be ongoing. Y'all may remember, they already moved like the power lines. And if y'all seen that happen, they took a bunch of trees down onsite. Not in NC DOT, it was a subcontractor in NC DOT. But those trees were right along here. So some of the work, the utility realizations already happened. And the request is, as Jamie framed it, that we just want to add this triangle so that we can have better traffic movement inside the site. Those are all the comments I have. I'm here to take questions. Mr. Benorey's here. They've owned this facility for a while. It's a great, I know a lot of y'all probably shop at this Harris Theater. And so we're excited about making this change under the request that the commission approved.
If you would just wait right there for a second. Any questions from the commission?
Yes.
Go ahead.
What is the pull of tractor trailers right now?
What, how do they move now? So the way they, I've actually got a... The tractor trailers come in on the west side.
Off of Church Street.
Off of Church Street. And there's that one-way road that, you know, there's some limitations on how you can move right there. They come in on the west side, they come around the back, and then they'll back into the Harris Theater. And then the hope will be if this is approved and the improvements are made to Shadowbrook, they'll come out and just do a right turn there. The truck traffic is still coming out on Shadowbrook now, but it'll just have better movement.
Any questions down from this side?
Yes, sir.
I have one.
Yes, sir.
You said you had a community meeting with, or you met with the neighbors.
We did meet with the neighbors.
What did they say?
Yeah, so...
What were their concerns?
We met with six neighbors. One of the neighbors are actually the folks that own the CVS. I think they say their CVS are all over there, sits there on the corner. It was questions about screening, questions about how that right out was gonna operate. It was as much about, hey, what is DOT planning? As it was what we were planning. So I think most people, after we had those neighborhoods, the six that were intended, felt better about the, how the flow was gonna happen.
All right, perfect. So you feel like you addressed their concerns?
Absolutely.
Okay, perfect. Hold up, you'll get a chance if anybody's here to speak on this subject.
Thank you.
Is there anyone on the left-hand side of the room that would like to address this matter that's before the planning and zoning commission now? Anyone on the right-hand side of the room who would like to address this item that is before us now?
Did anyone sign up on the sign-up sheet? Do you have that?
Do what?
The sign-up sheet. I'll just check out there and make sure.
It's usually sitting at the podium, I thought. Well, since no one's here to speak to it.
Did staff receive anything?
Yeah, well, did staff receive anything?
We, to my knowledge, we did not receive any calls on this case.
And your recommendation, the city's recommendation is?
Option number two.
Option two, which is approved, but it's inconsistent with the land use plan.
As is the existing.
As is today. As is the new with the new UDO.
The existing zoning for that shopping center that exists now under a conditional business is also inconsistent with the future land use.
Right.
So by amending the zoning for this property would also be inconsistent, same as today.
Right, but it just ties to what's already there. Comments, concerns? Comments, concerns? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. Make a motion to approve inconsistent with LUP, amend LUP. I make a motion to recommend approval of the request to amend an existing conditional business district, CB, unified business district development. The property is located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Nice Drive and Shadowbrook Drive, addressed as 104 Nice Drive, and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 114086. While the request is inconsistent with the future land use map in Section 4, Land Use of the Comprehensive Plan, and what it calls for, this area to have suburban residential uses, the request is compatible with the existing commercial uses in the area. The request seeks to improve existing circulation in the area. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the comprehensive plan encourages a sustainable balance of land uses. The request is compatible with the existing zoning and land uses in the area.
Is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion and a second. Jamie, would we do a, could we do a roll call on the vote?
Let's do a roll call.
Okay.
Chair Patrick?
Approve.
Let's see. Member Rena?
Approve.
Member Saunders?
Approve.
Members Patachini?
Approve.
Member Mills?
Approve.
And member Rick?
Approve.
Okay. Motion passes, six to zero. We will be informed, we will, next up will be, we notify the applicant in terms of when this item will be moving to City Council. We'll be notifying for that as well. So congratulations, and...
Next item.
Next item.
Thank you all. Item number eight, which is TRCPD 24-23. Mr. Tony Rome, and I may be butchering your name, and I apologize for that. Applicant is to present a request to amend a planned development for the Willows at Burlington, previously approved as TRC 20-026 and TRC 22-02. The property is located on the east side of St. Mark's Church Road, north of Alamance Crossing Shopping Center, addressed as 1408 St. Mark's Church Road/Overcoat Loop, and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 106976.
Some of you may recall this application in front of you previously. This is the existing planned development that include the Planning and Zoning Commission and ultimately through City Council. Just in summary, the property is about six and so acres in size. It is consistent with the future land use designation of the area. The property has already been rezoned for multifamily. The applicant, these are some of the drawings and renderings that were included as part of the previous planned development. There was a greenway provided with sidewalk connecting to Alamance Crossing, and then a sidewalk connecting across the street ultimately to the park. The top concept map shows, generally speaking, locations of buildings and open space, some of the architectures that were provided at that time. So in general, just summarizing, this is, pretty much the applicant can speak to their request, but they're just looking to add six additional units from what was previously approved. So under our UDO, under our Unified Development Ordinance, changes of that matter have to come back in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission and ultimately to City Council. So the amendment would be from 205 to 211, in terms of the number of units. They have added additional fire lane. And they have also, so they satisfied on fire departments comments. And then they also have added in some sustainability incentives in order for them to get that additional density. So they are consistent, as I mentioned before. There's a lot of information in your package in terms of what all you went through, some of you went through before, and how it was just provided in terms of reference so you know what ultimately they were providing in terms of enhanced qualities and efforts at that time. So I'm not gonna belabor, belabor that too much. Any, any questions on that?
When we did this originally, it was a planned development. I thought it was HDR, but I see now that this was back in February of '21.
Right. This was one of, it might be the second development that the city had in front of it in the planning board.
What say you, sir?
My name is David Ransenberg.
Okay, okay.
And my address is 13860 Valentine Corporate Place in Charlotte. When we purchased this property, it was zoned for 205 units. And we were looking at ways to some affordability component. You guys don't have that capability of having affordable housing that is kind of monitored by the city or state. So Jamie actually was very kind and introduced us to the sustainability aspect of it. So we had some a lot of inefficiencies within the building. So we felt as though we could get six more units, not affecting the building whatsoever or external, it's all within the building. And we went ahead and did other parking studies and passed those. So we felt resolved by adding EV chargers, which is all part of your unit. EV chargers, a highly reflective roof. And there was one other item. I think that's the two items, yeah. And then there really needed to be another fire lane coming in here. Because we were kind of over the mark anyway, 205. So we introduced that, and it worked out very well. We're gonna put it on the northern part of the property. So we kind of hit all the birds with one stone as we possibly could. And I think we came up with a better project, so. I actually think that your ordinance, this project fits in extremely well with that. You're not changing anything in the building, you're just making it more efficient within the building.
When you added the, oh, I'm sorry. Are you through?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Does anybody have any questions for the Commissioner Rome? I mean, I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Ransenberg.
Mr. Ransenberg. Any questions here? Questions here?
Yes, sir.
I have one. The six additional units that you added, were they one-bedroom? There were, so it was six one-bedroom?
Yes.
So we're adding a grand total of six?
It'd be 211.
Six people?
Yes.
Potentially. Could be two.
Yeah, yes.
So it could be 12. All right, anybody got any, no questions, we'll go there? Left-hand side of the room, for now, you may sit if you like. Anyone on the left-hand side of the room that would like to address this matter before the Planning and Zoning Commission? And before you, before you speak, ma'am, I'd just like to remind you, just kind of make mention of this real quick. There's, the room's pretty packed. So when, if this is the matter that you're speaking on, or if it's the next matter, if someone brings up traffic, we don't need to hear that four or five times. If somebody brings up something else, whether it be the environment or whatever, what other item may come before us, once we hear it once or twice, we're good. So there's no point in repeating something that someone has said previously. Outside of that, the floor is yours, ma'am. Please state your name and address.
May I ask?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Jamie.
May I just ask, because of the number of people in the audience, do you want to set a time limit on?
We said three minutes.
Three minutes?
Yeah.
Jamie Kinsell, I live at 1338 Willow Drive, Burlington. We've discussed this before. I don't know if it was a previous owner that had first bought that land and was first kind of do it. We had had Zoom calls during the COVID on this matter. And some of the things we had said we didn't want is we don't want any cut-throughs, even paths for people to be able to walk through our neighborhood. Berkshire and Willow Oak are back there. We've been dead in roads forever, and it used to be really private. We already have one apartment complex that blocks their neighborhood all the time. We just really didn't want another one. Also, the first time the man agreed to put up a fence and then a buffer with trees and bushes at the end of, like, along that property edge that runs up to our neighborhood. And we would like that again, just something we can kind of like keep our own space. We don't have other people coming through. And there was one more thing. And then the dumpsters. We already have the loud dumpsters coming from the Boot Barn and all those places down there. I'd like to request that the dumpsters are put on the far side where the businesses are, not where the homes are.
I'm just indicating that nothing has changed on the site plan related to the previous approved plan, which I believe addressed all of those concerns.
Because the last map I saw, not the one you gave, but I saw another one. It did show they're considering that walk-through of Greenway onto Willow Oak and on Berkshire.
No, they're not.
Okay, so that will be closed off?
You got what you want? We deliver. Anyone else on the left-hand side of the room? Anyone on the right-hand side of the room that would like to speak to this matter before the Planning and Zoning Commission? No? Oh, you, I'm sorry, ma'am, I missed you. I didn't see you standing up. I apologize.
And I know you said you didn't want repetitions, but I just wanted to... My name is Donna Campbell. I live at 1344 Berkshire Road at the end of the dead end. And I've lived there for 44 years. And so as you were saying, we definitely do not want the cut-through on Berkshire and Willow Oak. We were promised that by the City Council. They approved that before.
And then nothing's changed on that.
And, you know, we're used to the privacy and the security. And we were promised a security fence and no cut-through of the streets.
And that's, Jamie just confirmed that. And so did our owner right there. So you were good. Comments, concerns, left side? Comments, concerns, right side?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion? Is there further discussion, motion? Jamie, what do we have?
We are recommending the amendment to the planned development consistently optioned down in your consistency statement.
Can anybody find that? It's in the packet.
Yeah, I can't find it.
Hold on, I'll get it if you, let me get to it. Yeah, if you've got it in front of you, make it.
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve, consistent with LUP. I make a motion to recommend approval of the request to amend an existing planned development. The property is located on the east side of St. Mark's Church Road, north of Alamance Crossing Shopping Center, addressed as 1408 St. Mark's Church Road/Overcoat Loop, and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 106976. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan in that the future land use map in Section 4, Land Use of the Comprehensive Plan, calls for this area to have regional commercial. The request is compatible with the existing commercial uses and residential uses. The development includes the construction of a greenway, sidewalk extension to Joe C. Davidson Park, an urban open space area, architecturally enhanced buildings, connectivity to Alamance Crossing, and a future bus shelter easement. The proposed plan complies with the adopted City of Burlington Greenway Plan and Bike Way Plan. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the comprehensive plan calls for a mixture of uses. The request is compatible with the existing zoning and land uses in the area.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion and a second. Jamie, would you do a roll call vote, please, ma'am?
Sure. Chair Patrick?
Approve.
Mr. Rena?
Approve.
Mr. Saunders?
Approve.
Mr. Patachini?
Approve.
Member Mills?
Approve.
And Mr. Rick?
Approve.
Motion passes, six to zero. We will also inform everyone in terms of what is going to follow the City Council.
Moving on to item number nine. We'll let everybody kind of clear out. You ready to move forward? Okay. You want me to wait? Okay.
I'll go ahead and make my position to you guys. And then the applicant, I know, has some information they want to share with you.
I'm gonna read it first, and then you can do your thing, and then we'll have the applicants. Does that sound good? Item number nine, TRCPD 23-02. Ms. Amanda Hurdern, applicant to present a request to rezone property from medium-density residential, MDR, to planned development PD. The property is located on the north side of Williams Road and Rural Retreat Road, southwest of the intersection of Rural Retreat and University Drive, addressed as 3949 Rural Retreat Road, and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 106711. Jamie?
Thank you. The application that's in front of you has also, you may be familiar with, some of you. So this is a request to change the zoning of the property that's highlighted on the map in its 29 acres and change. The current zoning is medium-density residential, and the applicant is proposing to change the zoning to planned development. There was a previous TRC-approved planned development on March 7. The Planning and Zoning Commission did not recommend that item. So the applicant, and that was on April 22, the applicant has amended their application and is now returning back to the Planning and Zoning Commission following TRC approval again, which was on September 19. In terms of... Well, we can't read this at all, but this map summarizes and shows from a conceptual basis the five buildings, as well as different conceptual parking areas, buffer areas, garage areas, entranceway, emergency access easement and drive provided, as well as a future potential dedication, well, a dedication as part of this for potentially a future connection through the adjacent properties to University Drive. There are other enhancements that the applicant has committed to in terms of enhanced landscaping and enhanced buffering, as well as commitments to additional building design associated with our multifamily design standards.
And we came up with a less intense development. It's just that simple. The design intent is the same. It would be the only one like it in Burlington, and if you improve it, price point's the same. Everything is the same, and I'd be happy for the new members to explain more if you'd like. But in response to the neighbors and in response to the planning board, we dramatically reduced the intensity of the development. Just that simple. We moved the building, we enhanced the green spaces, we're further away from the wetlands, we've added some additional emergency exits for the fire department. And with me tonight are the civil engineer who can answer any questions you want concerning traffic, the road patterns, anything, and also the architect/land planner who can address what we changed and why we did it. If you look up there, you'll see, now Chris put the, oh, yeah, Chris, you put the one with the X in, oh, sorry. That was the plan we previously submitted to the board. Big X is what we took out. So we reduced the development from 325 units, right, Chris?
Three, three hundred and thirty.
Thirty units to 275 units. We reduced the amount of parking to match with the ratios. We've enhanced the green space. So it's a much less intense development. It will have less impact on traffic, and we did not reduce the amenities. The amenities stayed the same. So from a development standpoint, it's just going to be less normal. We thought that was appropriate, given the response that we had from the planning board and some of the neighbors. We feel very enthusiastic. We'd like to build this pretty well. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. Questions?
Just a question on the, a couple of questions. I was not on the commission back when you came in April. I assume that a lot of complaints from the public and neighborhood about the visibility of the, of the project, that's why you're putting in the, you increased the berm, the berm width to 50 feet?
Yes.
And I guess the, putting more trees or Option D or wherever it is on the plan. Is that, I guess, and if, I assume that's why, that's why you did the extra berm width. And I, and forgive me for asking, I'm not, I'm not familiar enough. Is there a guarantee on the trees that is planted like a year or what?
We, we have landscape, this is a lot of landscaping.
It is, yeah, and I, and...
It costs a lot of money. And the landscape contractor will give us an unconditional guarantee of a minimum of the year.
Okay.
As, as an owner, one of the things we sell is aesthetics. And so it's sort of selfish, because we get more rent if the property's kept well and it looks pretty. So while it sounds altruistic, it's, it's a financial consideration.
I just, I just also wanted to add that you can see here that the trees, we have a tree saver area, so this entire area here will be saved, including this area here that has a stream in the middle. And then this, this buffer here has been increased to 50 feet from the required 30 feet, going all around the site up to here, and then down here. All these buffers will be landscaped, heavily landscaped in excess of the requirements. So you're gonna have a nice buffer from, you know, the adjacent lots going all around the site.
And, and it'll be a year guaranteed?
Yes.
For the neighborhood, if they see the trees being planted, and then the trees, for whatever reason, not all of them gonna live, they're gonna be some that's gonna die. If, if they die, they, they contact, they go back to the city, do they?
We own the property.
You got that property.
So it's not a condominium, it's a rental. So we own the property, and the landscape contractor will have a guarantee with us. And there's a whole process you go through to make sure that the plans are established.
Okay. One other thing, and I know this is conceptual, and you haven't got down to the nitty-gritty yet, but looking at the conceptual with the, especially the right turn lane coming off of Retreat, Rural Retreat Road onto Williams Mill Road, the right turn lane, and, and then you got the, the multi-use path going up Rural Retreat. The contours out there, the, the site, especially at the intersection of Rural Retreat and Williams Mill, it drops down quite a bit, so you're gonna have to build that up. I guess the bump, long story short, once you get to the technical part of it with the, with the multi-use path, and getting the curb and gutter in and all that stuff, and the deep power lines, they're on that, they're on that side of the road of Rural Retreat, they're gonna have to be relocated, and that may be in the, in the berm. Once you get all that stuff worked out, if you get back with, from DOT that says you gotta do this, 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 and now you're pushing it into the berm more and more, will it come to a point where you'll have to come back to the commission because you can't get the 50-foot berm in?
No. But to answer your question, our civil engineer is here, who can, if you would like, who can address that?
Well, that's, that's all telling, we're out here for the technical part, but I know you gotta get approved from DOT and all that.
We did the study, it showed what was required, and then we added additional lanes, and it's a given, that's what we have to do as part of the agreement. And constructability-wise, we will build that one way or another, and it will not eat into that berm.
Okay. That's all, that was, but I didn't want to come back and, and...
No.
Approve, and then, then you get the comment back from DOT.
That's why we did this order.
This has got to, you know, move that pedestrian path or multi-use path over a little further and all that stuff.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good, just, it's good.
You satisfied?
I'm satisfied.
Ryan, you got anything?
I do. What is the functionality of that path from Lemick Road, Lime Rick Road? I am new to the council too, so I wasn't here for the first time, but it's in a northwest corner of the property.
Question for...
Yeah, in between the wooded, canteaus.
Oh, over here? Oh, so that's, that's just an easement for sewer and water, because that's what this existing sewer connection is right here.
Okay.
There's an existing sewer connection, so we just tie in to that easement, that sewer easement, and, and that's why it's shown up. But that won't be, that's not an access point.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to be sure, because I know it's common for residents to be concerned about when people walk in.
That's where the utilities happen to be, because it's in this road.
Okay. And then is all of the traffic from this flowing out into Williams Mill Road currently?
Yes and no.
That's the south, the south?
Yes and no.
The south road?
There is a proposed easement, Christopher, go up to the roundabout.
On to University, yeah.
The city of Burlington suggested that we put a roundabout there in anticipation of that easement being opened. And we've already had very preliminary discussions with the gentleman that owns that big piece, who will be here seeking development approval in the future. And we will build that, you know, subject to an agreement with him as soon as the job is underway.
And in the area that we're showing here, this is, you know, we discussed this with staff, with, with the client staff. This is where they've recommended that we show that, that road coming into our site to then be coordinated with the adjacent owner.
But in theory, if that adjacent owner doesn't develop it, that this roundabout would not happen?
Oh, yes. I mean, we're gonna make every effort to buy it from them. We don't have an agreement yet, but we're showing it as something that we believe will occur.
Okay, good. Do you, and do you know offhand, is there a median on University right there, Jamie?
Yes.
Do you know? So there's, it would only be a left-in and a right-in or right-out?
That's gonna, the city is, that's going to be a signalized intersection.
Okay.
Required. That's why it's the location.
I think it lines up on another road.
Right, it lines up on the design.
Okay, all right. Those condos that are...
And in the study, we were conservative, we modeled this and did a traffic study based off of solely that one access and our mitigation. This would basically cut the traffic in half, and so therefore we would have overly mitigated all of the mill traffic. And in addition to that, we've eliminated one of our, so we've also reduced the unit account from 330 to 275, so that's also an impact.
This side, commission done, satisfied?
Yes.
This side, questions?
I got one question for y'all. So just look at the plan, the stream buffer, so again, I'm new to the commission too, just a question on the stream buffer. Have y'all considered any facts of flooding or anything like that from, like, like we just had Pauline come through not too long ago with heavy rains and stuff like that? So I, I guess that's been taken into consideration, any sort of...
You're talking about this stream right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a small, small stream, and, and we actually had to verify about the US Army Corps already.
I think the question is, is it the type of stream that in another 100-year storm would flood?
I don't know.
No.
This is the article.
It's a great, no, sir, I don't know. But it's designated by the Corps of Engineers as wetlands, and we've dealt with it.
And Sam, I'll just say that when the US Army Corps did verify, it's not a floodplain area, it's a, it's a wetland, so it's a different designation.
That's a good one.
But as a wetland, we, we stay away from it, but it's not designated within the flood maps as a flood zone, so it's, it's not a flood zone.
Perfect, thank you.
Now I have a question. Are you, we're done over here? You good? Everybody good on this side and on this side? I know you had a, a, a meeting before when you came back in April. Did you have another meeting with the community?
We had one.
Before you did, before you come back this time? You got a second meeting with them?
We had one.
Okay.
It was not that well attended.
Okay.
But people there did not raise serious objections, and we were able to answer everyone's questions.
Okay. Very good.
So we've had, we've had two neighbor meetings, uh, today, one in April, and we had another one in March 24th.
Okay. All right, very good. Well, we might bring you back up. Thank you, gentlemen, thank you. Again, I would like to remind everyone of repeating what the previous individual has stated, but we'll start on this left-hand side of the room. Is there anyone who would like to speak on the matter? Jamie, have you got it? Perfect, thank you. Yes, go ahead, please, please come forward, please.
My name is Deborah Jaggers, I live at 412 Williams Mill Road. I'm on the corner of Rural Retreat and Williams Mill Road, so we see everything. I'm here to speak for it. The reason I want to speak for it is because I think this is a lot better, for this to get passed now, something a lot nicer than most of the apartment buildings, communities that are coming up. I'd rather have this than 20 apartment buildings across the street. If you all turn this down, at some point in time, somebody else is gonna come up and say, we want to do this, and somebody's gonna say, yeah, pull past 20 apartment buildings going up. I think this is a much nicer thing for our area. It'd be great if it stayed the way it is, but it's not gonna happen, so I'm just here to speak for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the left-hand side of the room who would like to speak to this matter before the Planning and Zoning Commission? No one? The right-hand side of the room, is there anyone who would like to speak on this matter before the Planning and Zoning Commission?
I was at the end of Williams Mill Road, I spoke, the first meeting that we had, not the April. And during those minutes, I requested that there be a community meet where the developer contacted everyone down Williams Mill Road and Shepherd Drive and Rural Retreat, not just the five people that showed up at the first meeting. So after the meeting, I met with Sam, so it's along with the side of the doors that displays, and he promised that they would send letters to everyone in our community and would have a second meeting. In September, this second meeting come about, I didn't even know about it, none of us received any letters. No notification whatsoever, except the same party could attend the next meeting in September. So of course, again, nobody in the community knew exactly what was going on, or put any input. So last week, when I found out about this, I called Sam, spoke to him on the phone, and his comment was, he was sorry that he dropped the ball. He did not know why they turned, he did not send letters up to all this. So at that point, I was furious, because this, this impact of this particular project is going to impact our community detriment. Not only are we dumping almost 500 vehicles out of Williams Mill Road, if that's probably the number, they only took out one apartment complex, and I think that was because it was also supposed to fall. The other thing was, they really didn't change any, any ingress/egress, they just added a fire emergency access. So you're still dumping all that traffic out of Williams Mill Road. And with this project, it's just, I can't fathom that amount of people coming onto one small little community, which were all retired, it's a quiet community. And the other thing was that, what really bothered me about this was when I spoke to Sam on the phone just last week, two days later, I finally received a letter from him acknowledging our conversation. And in that conversation, my major concern when I wanted to have these meetings was because of, in our area, there's a heavily laced rock bed. And in the last 30 years, I'm one of the only people down here that's one of the house built. And when we were building our house, we hit rock at 8-foot. And I'm concerned about it, because shortly after that, the city of Burlington came in and they put in the water and sewer line on the outfall Little Dark Creek to feed water. When they did that, they brought a last big contractor in out of state. And that contractor, we didn't know what was going on, started dynamite, the other thing was sewer lining. Well, at the time, we didn't know where the dynamite was, you know, shots were coming from, and elimination, we figured out where it was. And so I contacted the city, the city said, I contacted dynamite.
I'm gonna sting, yeah.
Anyways, coming down to it, they cracked my foundation, they cracked the neighbor's foundation, they cracked our wells. Down Williams Mill Road, most people know this, there's the outfall sewer line that goes down to Little, gives to Little Dark Creek. Well, that was supposed to be eliminated, well, they cracked that. They contaminated all of our water. We had fecal levels off the charts, we didn't know it.
I think this is a much nicer thing for our area. It'd be great to stay the way it is, but it's not going to happen. So I'm just here to speak for it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else on the left-hand side of the room who would like to speak to this matter before the Planning and Zoning Commission? No one? The right-hand side of the room, is there anyone who would like to speak on this matter before the Planning and Zoning Commission?
I need to come on and talk to the end of Williams Mill Road. First meeting that we had back in April. And during those minutes, I requested that there be a community meeting where the developer contacted everyone down Williams Mill Road and Shepherd Drive and Rural Retreat, not just the five people that showed up at the first meeting. So after the meeting, I met with Sam. So it's a long, it's a side of black doors that displays. And he promised that they would send letters to everyone in our community and we'd have a second meeting. Well, in September, this second meeting come about, I didn't even know that. None of us received any letters. No notification whatsoever, except the same fire could attend to the next meeting in September. So of course, again, nobody in the community knew exactly what was going on. We put in the input. So last week, when I found out about this, I called Sam, spoke to him on the phone, and his comment was, he was sorry that he dropped the ball. He did not know why they turned this, did not send letters out to all of us. So at that point, I was furious because this impact of this particular project is going to impact our community detriment. Not only are we dumping almost 500 vehicles out of Williams Mill Road, if that's probably the number, they only took out one apartment complex. And I think that was because it was also supposed to park. The other thing was, they really didn't change any ingress, degress. They just added a fire emergency S. So we're still dumping all that traffic out of Williams Mill Road. And with this project, it's just, I can't fathom that amount of people coming onto one small little community, which were all retired, it's a quiet community. And the other thing was that what really bothered me about this was when I spoke to Sam on the phone just last week, two days later, I finally received a letter from him acknowledging our conversation. And in that conversation, my major concern, why I wanted to have these meetings, was because of, in our area, there's a heavily laced rock bed. And in the last 30 years, I'm one of the only people down there whose one of the houses was built. And when we were building our house, we hit rock at Aitwood. And I'm concerned about it because shortly after that, the city of Burlington came in and they put in the water and sewer line on the outfall of Little Black Creek to feed water. When they did that, they brought a last big contractor in out of state. And that contractor, we didn't know what was going on. Started dynamiting down there, putting sewer lines. Well, at the time, we didn't know where the dynamite was, you know, shots were coming from and elimination, we didn't really know where it was. And so I contacted the city, and the city said, "Contact the dynamite."
I'm going to stay here. I think we should stay.
Anyways, coming down to it, they cracked my foundation. They cracked the neighbor's foundation. They cracked our wells. Down Williams Mill Road, most people know this, there's the outfall sewer line that goes down to Little, gives to Little Black Creek. Well, that was supposed to be eliminated. Well, they cracked that. They contaminated all of our water. We had fecal doubles off the charts. And we didn't know it until months later, we started getting sick. And we also ended up having to go to Duke to do these carbon tests. So this went on for months. Went after the contractor, and we couldn't get any results from the contractor because he said, "Well, prove that we did the damage." Because we didn't have a time stamp on our foundations before and after. So then, of course, all our kids were sick, we had to get tests done. And this went on and on. I ended up having to put a casing down my well. We also had to have antibiotics on a regular basis for several months with the beauty light in. And this was all on our responsibility because we couldn't go out to the land track. And City of Burlington lost their hands in it. So this is my problem. If they're putting five buildings in there, they're supposed to have underground apartments, correct? Which I did not see on the plans. I went to the city of Burlington last week to find out if they pulled any geological studies on this project, and they had not. So we don't go for any sonar of the rock bed below these particular apartments. So if they do have to dump it, which I am sure they're going to have to, because the rock bed down there from the geological studies from the sewers that they put in showed blue ground. And the ground is the hardest rock there is. So again, if they're putting five major footings in for these buildings, for these underground parking areas, there's no question in my mind we're going to have to dump it. And you have almost 70 homes sitting on water and sewer all the way around. Not only that water that it backs up to, if the blast flow above ground, it's infrastructure damage. And when this blast flow off underground, from what I've understood, when the shots go off, they find caverns and caverns to go through. And these caverns find these open voids such as basements.
Right, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up. I've extended your time.
So anyways, this is my concern.
I understood it, understood it.
Any concessions this developer can protect us? And...
Ma'am, we will ask him.
So, but again, and again, we still haven't had a good meeting with the community to sit down and talk these things over.
Again, ma'am. I understand, ma'am.
Before my questions.
I understand.
Those were my major concerns.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else on the right-hand side of the room who would like to speak to this matter?
Justin Fowler, I live at 4002 Limerick in Watford. Just two quick concerns. You mentioned a path. I have keen interest in that because I live right where that is. I just want to make sure there was some kind of deterrence. You know, it does look like it's a wider path, so I know that's the...
Okay, we can address that.
As long as there's some type of deterrence. And then the creek that somebody mentioned, that I also own where that runs into, that directly runs into my property. And I own that down almost where it goes into the lake. I just have some concerns with all of the building and the trees that are going to be taken down. That they do some type of study to make sure that's not going to cause any type of flooding of that area. That also feeds into the lake that's down at the bottom. And once again, with the water issues that we run into, we want to make sure that there's deterrence and mitigation and all of that has been strongly looked at because that, there's a dam at that lake and that can always just aim so much stress to it. So as long as there's solid studies that they've looked into that for mitigation, those are just my two main concerns.
Thank you, sir. Did you state your name and address? I didn't catch it. Yeah, you did, I'm sorry, you did.
Justin, I live at Limerick.
Right, yeah, thank you. Anyone else on the right-hand side of the room? Mr. Swetsonbaum, I'm going to give you the opportunity to stand back up and handle a couple of things. You've got two concerns, well, actually three. If you would address, and I'm sure you probably have some sort of erosion control plan in place that you have, that you had approved? Or if you're that far along in the process, I don't know.
For the streams?
Yes.
Christopher, first of all, I have a letter from our council. When I spoke to that young lady, I thought we dropped the ball. We didn't drop the ball. And I have a letter from our council describing how she went and notified everybody because I was concerned. But everyone, everyone that was required to be notified was notified. So I'm going to press that.
You can verify that. I mean, we do 300, right?
My understanding is that they notified the residents and the properties within 300 feet. I don't know if that addresses...
That would be a total of 56 names.
Jordan, would you like? We had the erosion control issue, which is something that will be taken care of in your site plan. You probably don't have that done yet.
Yeah, I was just going to mention, since that is a jurisdictional stream.
Right.
So we are not allowed to touch it when all...
Right, I mean, you've got a buffer and everything associated with it.
That's highly regulated by the state and by NCDQ.
I'm very...
There's a really strict protocol. We can't impact that stream anyway.
There was a mention of underground parking?
There is not.
There is not?
So we're not going to be doing any underground digging. We're not going to be going down.
Just simple, normal, slappable grade footings. In the elevator pit, so.
I'm not having to go down 70 feet.
7, 8 feet is your max?
We don't have to go, I think.
You don't have to, okay. But I mean, it's all physical elevation, you know.
Since we're not doing underground parking, we don't have to go, we don't have to go down.
Let's see, there was that. There was the guarantee of access on Limerick?
Right, so I...
Or limited access?
One thing that we want to mention...
You mentioned something.
This is a gated, it's a gated community.
Right.
With security. So Limerick would be fenced off.
Okay.
There won't be an access there.
Okay. All right. Any more questions for the developer? Left side, any more questions for the developer? All right.
Can I ask the fencing? I just didn't see that in the... What type of fencing is that going to be?
It's decorative. It's aluminum fencing. And if you won't, we can send you pictures of it so that you'd be happy. Decorative. It's not, it's not a chain link, it's not a chain link fence. It's a specially constructed, attractive aluminum fence. If you can find one on there and show it to me, I'll... We've done it in our other communities in Charlotte. But it's not a chain link fence.
Okay.
It's a nice...
Anything else? Jamie?
Well, just for a point of reference, there's no... and it's fine, there's no fence shown on, I think, or proposed in the planned development. That can be worked out at the time of site plan in terms of those parameters. But I just don't want the neighbors to be misunderstood that there won't be a fence as part of this approval unless they're going to be committed to their family.
So there's no commitment to a fence? Or there is a commitment to a fence?
No, we... I will commit.
That's between you and the planning department, and that gentleman back there.
The staff has not written any details pertaining to a fence or whether or not it can be located in certain areas. So I would hold off, in my opinion, in staffing it to whether or not it's viable or not.
Right, to make it work.
Because there are environmental constraints and floodplains and wetlands in those areas. So I just wanted to go and connect to you that that would be okay without us having to...
I was just going to mention, like, all of our new communities are fenced off. That's something that we would recommend.
They'll work that out later.
I'll just say as a courtesy that we...
Sure. Tell them. Up here, anything else? This side? Nothing else from the community? Is there a motion?
Make a motion if I can borrow your piece of paper.
Jamie, your recommendation, the city's recommendation is?
Yes, so our recommendation is to...
I know what it is.
Option number one.
Yeah, the one in red.
Yes, consistent with the future land use plan.
Go ahead.
I make a motion to recommend approval of the request to rezone property from medium-density residential MDR to Planned Development, PD. The property is located on the north side of Williams Mill Road and Rural Retreat Road, southwest of the intersection of Rural Retreat Road and University Drive, addressed as 3949 Rural Retreat Road, and consistent of Alomets County Catching Notification Number 106711, file number TRCPD-23-002. This motion is based upon consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan in that the future land use map in Section 4 Land Use of the comprehensive plan calls this area to have suburban residential uses. Section 3 Livability Code 01, Recommendation 3 calls to encourage a mix of housing options in all borough neighborhoods that supports affordability, accessibility, and diversity. Section 5 Parks and Open Space Goal 02, Recommendation 1 calls to continue to implement the 2012 Recreation and Parks Master Plan. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the comprehensive plan calls for residential uses in the area. The request is compatible with the existing zoning and land uses in the area. The development meets the purpose and intent of the Planned Development District Goals and Objective to provide a high-quality and enhanced form of development.
There's a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion and a second. Jamie, would you do a roll call?
Terrifico Patrick?
Approved.
Member Ringer?
Denied.
Member Saunders?
Approved.
Members Spadichini?
Denied.
Member Mills?
Approved.
And Member Britton?
Approved.
Motion passes 4 to 2. And we will, staff will be letting you know when the island will be pulled into City Council. We will be advertising that as such.
That's it? Is there, that's our last item for the evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We're done. Jamie, thank you.
Yeah, I went up for it because I was like, I don't have this in front of me.
Earl, what's going on, brother? You two remember that we used to say the proof? Back in the day, it was just the proof or deny. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I have no idea. How long was the business you were on with your circle?
Oh, that was more than I was before calling. We kind of lost a lot of news there.
Yeah, because I...
Like I said, if this doesn't come through, this is... We've got apartments coming up.
That's why it was all about...
James, be good, pretty good.
Good to see you.